I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call.
Mr. Ballard?
Here.
Mr. Democchia? Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Sturgill?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here. And Ms. Santiago is here also.
Yes, yes. Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Have a recognition of our visitors. Of course, you guys are becoming normal here, so welcome, welcome, welcome. And Ms. Santiago is taking a phone call. Is she here? Okay. And we have a Mrs. Debbie. How do you say her last name?
Melda.
Melda? Is she here?
She is.
Hey, how are you? Welcome, welcome, welcome. Please come to the microphone.
My name's Debbie Melda, and I am here as a representative of OSBA's Northeastern Ohio Executive Committee. And I have two 10-year service awards to present. First one is Timothy Williams, the second is Bill Sturgill. And as the representative from OSBA, I would very much like to thank you for all you have done, not only for the students of Lorraine, but the entire state. We know how much work it is to be a board member. 10 years may not sound like 20 or 30 or 40 that we hear when we're down at the Capitol Convention, but that's a lot of work and a lot of time dedicated to your school.
Thank you, Ms. Melda.
Thank you.
Congratulations, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming all the way.
Thank you, thank you so much for that.
I'll be back at the next meeting.
We'll see you then. We look forward to seeing you. Thank you. So, from the district, guys, and I'll just say both of it at the same time, we really appreciate all the work and effort you guys have done all this time. People don't know the work that really goes in and the time that really goes in, and yeah, it's a thankless job, but thank you so much for all you do, both of you. Do you have anything to say, guys?
Yes, I'd like to say from being the junior member, I understand what 10 years entails. So, I really appreciate 10 years.
Amen. Thank you, guys. So, I'm going to come back in recognition of you guys a little bit later on in the agenda to talk about some of the things that we're going to talk about together. But at this point in time, first hearing of the public? Going once? Going twice? There is no takers. Okay? Approval of the minutes?
Recommendation for approval of the minutes from our, was it a regular meeting? Yes.
Just support. Got a recommendation and support. Is there any communication, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Next item. Old Business. Is there anything for Old Business?
I think what we need, Ms. Santiago, there were some previous requests, I guess, so maybe we should table this and come back to Old Business when she's back, because I think there were some information that we requested from the Law Director's Office that she might have some update for us on.
Okay.
So, I would recommend that we table the...
I hear her coming now. Issues. So, Ms. Santiago, there's been, we are at Old Business right now, and there's been a request from one of the board members for an update.
Yeah, I think there might be some, from our previous discussions and requests, there might be some updates that you have, of course. I know there was, one issue was regarding the, I don't know if there's any work on yet, the change of request of public information that was going, the memo that came out, did you get? So, at our last meeting, Mr. Jardine was here.
I was in here, forgive me.
Okay. And he was going to forward it to you, to your attention.
Okay.
An issue regarding, there was a change in the protocol for public request information.
Okay.
That it would no longer go through the Treasurer, which is by statute, however by its code, the protocol.
Okay.
And so, there was some question regarding that.
The legal opinion that was issued?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
And then, didn't we also have some other, what was the other piece?
If there was a question specific to that opinion, I'm sure Mr. Riley got that.
Okay.
I don't have the answer to that.
Okay.
Mr. Riley's not here tonight, but I will follow up on the follow-up.
Okay.
And get you the answer.
And then, there was one other, what was the other? Oh, the documents that were submitted to the Senate during the Senate hearing. And there was questions that were presented around one of the documents and the information that it contained with students' personal information.
Yes, correct. Mr. Ballard, on behalf of the board, did request a legal opinion of that. We don't have it in final draft form.
Okay.
When we do have it in final draft form, we'll be happy to issue that and review with the board. It's a final form.
And for full, we did cover some of those notes a little bit earlier, and we will be able to discuss that a little deeper.
Okay, yeah, I knew some of those are maybe executive session. I just knew that that was under that Old Business world.
Because I've not had a chance to review it all at this point, we're just going to discuss it.
Why don't we issue it in final form?
Okay.
We can throw it in.
Great. Thank you.
Anything else in Old Business? Some recommendations from the Treasurer?
I just wanted to run through, give you guys a brief synopsis of the forecast, five-year forecast update for May, similar to I did at the ADC meeting. Just kind of run through, and you guys, everybody has a copy within their packet. So, for the revenue piece of this, the major change is to the property tax, the general property tax line item. There is a bump there, and that had to do with the revaluation that was done by the Auditor's Office last summer. We kind of knew it was coming. I did not put anything in in October, just because I wanted to realize the increase first and then see how truly it was going to be an increase. And I did put it October versus May, so you can see the jump there. When it comes to your unrestricted state grant aid or your foundation payments, your state funding, there is no assumption here for anything having to do with Byanyum Budget or Patterson. That's still, with all the unknown, that's still, nothing's considered within there, so you don't see any movement on there from one point to the other, other than the update to actuals throughout the year might adjust some projections. So, you'll see the updates to the actual in 2019, and you might see some movement on the projections then beyond that, but not a whole lot. The next piece is then the expenditures. There is some movement on here in regards to personal service and benefits line items, those having to do with kind of our first year doing that pooled funding piece and how costs are trickling in. So, we have the updated actuals in here, and didn't really do a whole lot with the transfer line item yet, because I want to see how those costs come in in regards to what is actually in the pool, but the costs, how they're being reported, being instructional dollars going into the pool and the general fund dollars, and how that transition from where, basically where they fall on the forecast. So, you see some actual, the actual numbers are adjusted on here for both personal service and benefits. And then, as for purchase service, supply and material capital outlay, you see for 2019, there were some adjustments made to the actuals. There is an increase in here built around both tuition and then also instructional costs due to budgeting, looking at instructional costs due to like programming as well as technology. So, that's why you see that jump in fiscal year 2020 from October to May due to the budgeting, when we budgeted in February. And then, so another major change I did, just due to a recommendation, I did in the assumptions, put what the forecast would look like if I factored in, if we didn't have the pool, just so you can compare kind of apples to apples. I wanted to make sure that it was, you had that option of being able to see if the pool didn't exist, where would these costs fall? So, you do have that to compare to the forecast, the actual forecast with the funding pool versus what it would look like without the funding pool. So, then those are the major changes to the forecast. Any questions?
I have two, I know.
Sure.
So, was it last year that we changed for our health coverage?
It was January, yeah, January 1st of 18.
And what are we looking to spend going into the next year for that? Do you know what those numbers?
That alone, I don't off the top of my head. We received a 6% increase after a year and a half of being locked in. They froze our, just to get us, because we were on a calendar schedule, they froze us for a year and a half to get us on to their fiscal year schedule for LERC.
Okay.
And then, we did see a standard increase. We are still considered outside of LERC's funding pool until we are fully vested, fully funded into it.
Okay. And that would be done, that was over another half a year or another year?
It was going to be another, another year and a half, but there are actually another two years.
Okay.
And they're saying that they're going to, they reviewed it this year and said that we're actually are trending better than we were.
Okay.
And there's a possibility of us funding it sooner, and we might be able to come out of it, like not have to fund that sooner.
Okay.
And they're reviewing it year over year now. So, their recommendation, just talking to their advisory council through Finley-Davies, is that they, we might be able to not have to fund that, which would significantly reduce healthcare costs, not only for ourselves, but also employees.
Yeah, we passed on to the employees.
Yes.
Okay. Secondly, I know we have a bump in technology of almost a little better than a million dollars, right?
For next year, we bumped it up. I think it's, yeah, overall, it's about a million dollars. Well, it's a million dollars with everything.
Mm-hmm. And we spent, last year, we went, I guess, one-to-one, whatever that computer system worked out, we spent about the same amount of money to get those students those computers?
A little bit more, yeah, right around the same dollar amount, though.
Okay. So, we've gotten a portion of those computers back, and we're taking those out of the system now because we're going to the carding system, correct?
I think they're going to try and incorporate, from my understanding, they're going to try and incorporate some of the ones we got back into the carding system.
Okay.
But yeah, they are going to what is considered COWs, Computers on Wheels, and they are going to try and give them, make them available to every classroom. I think they ran into some pitfalls in regards to like making sure the students brought them to class and just different things like that. So, they transition back to the COWs, yeah.
And I guess that was leading to my next question, and if they're going to implement them into the new system, that answers my question, because I was wondering how we were going to decommission those that did come back, and if we ever got a final count on what our loss has been, has...
I don't know that we got a final count. I can, I'll ask that and see if I can...
Would you please?
Get it. But yeah, it was my understanding, the ones we got back that are still functional and weren't damaged or anything, we were going to incorporate into the COWs.
So, what was the, I mean, I would guess, like most things, we didn't expect this change. Three years ago, or two years, whenever it was being decided, we're going to go with this kind of a method of getting this technology to students.
Mm-hmm.
And then, with that expenditure, which was significant but reasonable, necessary.
Yeah, considering.
But it wasn't planned to have two years of this kind of expenditure.
It was, well, initially, when I forecasted it out, because there was some thought behind the seniors, when they graduate, they would take their computers. So, there was some ongoing cost. It wasn't going to be this cost continued, but there was going to be...
There was an initial investment made.
Yes.
And then, of course, there'd be additional costs.
Of course.
But now, we're making a different, like initial investment.
Correct. It's transitioning to a different model.
Basically, we abandoned that entire model.
Correct.
What is it that, I mean, it's been our history over a long period of time to start a model, be a curriculum, whatever, abandon it, start another one. So, what is this that's driving this change?
I think it's actually getting, and maybe Steve can speak to it better in regards to actually getting the computers in the classrooms.
Yeah, I think from the teacher's perspective, there was a lot of issues with kids not bringing their laptops to class, and, you know, the recommendation from the teachers that I talked to said, "We would prefer the COW method, because then we have control over that piece of the environment, not only just for testing, but for normal, you know, classroom activities, assignments, whatever," because kids will say, "Oh, my laptop's sitting at home on my, you know, headboard, or it's in my mom's car," or whatever.
Or in the bottom of their locker, not open.
Or at the bottom of those. Yeah. So, I think the mindset to go to the one-on-one was probably good in theory, but poor in implementation, because it just, I think we tried that years ago, and it did not work particularly well back then.
Well, that's, yeah, see, that's what I remember, again, I remember us trying it.
2014, the teachers had...
It didn't work. It was disastrous.
Right.
And so, I mean, it was, I mean, it was bad. Wasted significant money. So, we would hope that, you know, you do that one time, you learn the lesson, and then you move forward. So, I'm hoping that this is a part of the recommendation of teachers. I mean, I don't know, we had to go this route twice, because I think when we first heard about it, we were saying, "Hey, we did this before." I don't remember specifically why, because we don't really into that, those details, but it didn't work. So, then we tried it again. So, this model, you guys have discussed this more, and this seems like it's going to...
I don't know if we've actually, I mean, in teacher circles, it's been discussed, but I don't know if there was ever a formal, I don't believe there was ever a formal declaration from the administration to say, "Teachers, what do you think about," I mean, I don't want to speak to that, because I'm not sure, but I don't recall being a part of any meeting where it was discussed as far as, "Hey, what do you guys want to do for next year?" Even though, if you had talked to most teachers, I think they would agree that the COW method is the best method to have computers in the hands of students on a consistent daily basis.
Okay, and then, my other question leads to kind of, so, at the end of the day, whenever that is, reconciling this?
Mm-hmm.
What is our loss going to be? I mean, from what I understand, there are lots of these devices that we cannot account for.
Mm-hmm.
And so, I guess my question is, did we spend money or did we invest money? The idea is that we were investing money in technology, which means your investment is more...
I think it's probably going to be a combo of both. I think there's going to be some that obviously is lost, but I know, I do know we got, I don't even want to try and put a number to it, because I probably wouldn't be able to come close to where it was, but I do know we got some back as to how much, I couldn't even...
It was enough for us to change the model.
Well, we're still buying, yeah, yeah, the model was flawed. I mean, there's still, there were still enough issues with it that that's why we transitioned, so.
I do know each machine comes with a serial number that we assigned to them. So, for next meeting, could you find out how many machines we purchased, and then how many we received back, so we can know specifically what the number count is? I would appreciate it.
I do, I do know that if a senior brought theirs in and turned it in, that they got a, they got one to keep. Did anybody else hear this besides me? I mean, is this, did you hear that?
I didn't hear that, but the idea when they went to the one-to-one was that the seniors took them with them.
Yeah.
You got a computer, and it followed you with you, and when you graduated, it went with you.
Yeah.
That's why there was a cost to replace one grade level in the prior, the years after.
Yeah, but I do know, because I had a couple grandchildren that got, turned them in, got a new one. But you still have the old one, okay?
They turn in the old one, and then we give them a new one as a token of appreciation.
It wasn't, that wasn't my understanding, that they took a new one, but, was it?
They got one that, they're black. So, they turn theirs in, and we got, I'm not going to give them one just like it.
They're black.
A case that's not black. The idea is they're going to college.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
So...
Okay. Thank you. Anything further?
I got, I still have a, I still have a question.
Yes, sir.
When do you do the closeout?
It'll be the end of the month here.
End of the month, then. Last year, we had a $20.9 million carryover, right?
Yep.
Where do you, where does that go, once you figure out that you have that? Does that go, does that just go into the next year? Do you just add it to the next year? So, I mean, I'm assuming that you had a $20.9 million bonus to go into next year that you would do things.
Oh, yeah, we're better by that dollar amount.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, the actuals, as we're going in forecast, in the forecast, it rolls over. So, I mean, you're, there's the cash balance and the budget balance. That bud, that dollar amount doesn't roll into the budgets for next year. It's, you get, your cash balance gets better, so you're, you're going to push, basically push out your negative further. So, it, when you're, there's estimates in here now for the five years, or, well, about five years and, or four years and like three months now with the May update, but that basically gets factored in, and it also adjusts my projections. So, I'm going to look at it and realistically say, like, okay, I projected, you know, we came in $4 million better than I projected. That dollar amount then is going to make me say, well, maybe I tone that back to, because this is still worst-case scenario, so maybe I tone it back to say, well, maybe our cushion needs to be 3 million. Or, you know, I just look at overall costs and how they come in, and, you know, we'll kind of accommodate while still saving, or still keeping enough room in there for, you know, those catastrophe-type things or kind of the worst-case scenario year that comes through.
We'll make a nice rainy day fund.
Wow.
It's raining all the time.
Yeah, yeah. It was raining all the time, yeah.
So, and that, yeah, that's the one thing I do want to emphasize, is this is still worst-case scenario. It's always going to be, I mean, I'm going to always project, if I was to try and project to the dollar, we would be one catastrophe away from being broke.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that, because I remember, I remember how conservative Dale was.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
And I made the mistake, the first, what my first October forecast here, I realized it wasn't Sheffield. I made the mistake of, at Sheffield, I try and keep things as close as possible, and, you know, because the mistake there was $20,000, $30,000. The mistake here could be a couple hundred thousand dollars, just due to scope. So, yeah, I mean, I made that mistake and then saw the May update. You saw that big swing back for the May update in my first year here, and completely understood where, why Dale was so conservative.
Ultra-conservative.
Extremely, yes.
You're good. You're good. Is that it for your report?
Mm-hmm.
You have anything from the CEO?
I got nothing.
All right, very good. So, we're going to go to New Business, so, is there anything with you guys with New Business?
No.
Yeah, I'm going, I'm going, I want to make sure the board is good first, but, so, I was at the last ADC meeting, and there was some information presented at that meeting that I found to be somewhat alarming. And then, I received a letter that went to Anthony Ferris from the Attorney General's Office, and which alarmed me even more. So, I've invited Diane here to specifically kind of walk us through some of these findings that they have found out over at the ADC, and then we can kind of talk through some of these issues and see exactly where we are as a district, so.
Okay. Well, there were three items that I had put on the memo to Attorney Ferris. The first one, and I don't have it in front of me, the first one related to the Ohio Sunshine Law violations, which was actually brought up during the meeting. We have obtained emails that were orchestrated by CEO Hardy to the other three commissioners, and we had questions about, and the emails pertain to planning for the next ADC meeting, which we are deliberately excluded from. So, I just cited the dates of the email, and I wanted the attorney to look into that further, because it just, it's not right. If we're going to be corresponding with the commission, it should be the commission as a whole, not just separating the three other commissioners from Steve and I. The other bullet pertained to public records request policy violations. I have been told by multiple sources that the public records they've requested have not been honored, nor have they even gotten a response. So, I wanted there to be a further investigation on that. I mean, that's a law, and it needs to be upheld, and so, I wanted the Attorney General's Office to look into that as well. And might I go back to say that I requested that this investigation also be done in conjunction with the State of Ohio's Auditor Office and the Ohio Ethics Commission? The third bullet was misappropriation of public funds, and again, these are questionable. I've spent a lot of time requesting information from Treasurer Hill, and I've spent a lot of hours upon hours on my weekends and after an evening's going through documents and vendor information, and I came across some things that stood out to me as questionable. And those were reimbursement, a reimbursement check made to the chief of schools officer in the amount of $15,959, and I wanted that to be looked into. Some things that just didn't make sense to me were cashier's checks. I got a couple opinions by other treasurers that, you know, usually you don't, you don't look at cashier's checks, and you have to have backup documents to go along with that, and I did not receive any backup documents. There was an invoice from a moving company. Typically, I've seen invoices from moving companies where it shows line item receipts about exactly what was moved from point A to point B. This particular invoice did not have any backup documentation. And then, there was another one for an Airbnb cost that was in the amount of $3,976, and it was for a condo in Washington, DC from January 17th to March 2nd. And that really stood out to me, because the chief of schools officers contract didn't even start until March 12th. And then, on top of that, when I read the chief of schools officer contract, she, they were supposed to receive a maximum reimbursement of up to $10,000. And in this reimbursement, it was nearing $16,000. So, with these things, with me seeing these things, I'm reporting it, I'm asking it to be looked into further. Again, I'm calling it questionable, but these things stood out to me, and I think it needs to be investigated. I, and overly, I am concerned about the spending of the district, overall spending. We looked at the increase of administrators, and if I could ask Treasurer Hill through the chair a question very quickly.
Sure.
When I asked you about the LAA differential from FY '18 to FY '19, you said it was about 2.5 million, if I recall correctly. Did that include the directors as well, or was that just LAA?
That's just, well, no, that's, I'd have to look at it.
Okay.
I was going to say, I'm pretty sure, I made sure...
Because there's a handful of directors, too, which I'm sure their salaries are probably up into 600, 700,000, I would imagine.
I either included them on both, or I didn't include them on both, so that the differential shouldn't change, so they're either in both or not.
And I just, you know, I've looked at vendor contracts, I've looked at the amount for ANET, which we were told it was a grant matching funds, but we still paid, I think, over $300,000 from the general fund for ANET. And when I had asked questions the other night about ANET, I'd like to see what data and how we benefited from that this year. Teach for America, those, we spent $34,000 this year on Teach for America. I mean, it's just adding up, and when I look at the long-term future with your forecasts, we're going to be in some financial trouble here in the next coming years, and if we keep going on, we're going to be even in bigger trouble by next year if we don't come up with a solution to halt some spending.
I think I was, I think I was more concerned with what was brought up about how many, how many students we lost in high school. We talked about the high school.
And we're sure not even, yeah, we're not even certain of that number.
And we were talking 300 in the high schools. Is, that's what I, is that what you heard?
Enrollment, that's the other thing that I brought up.
I heard, I heard 300 in it. There's 300 in the high school.
I did the math on that.
You could probably get another 300.
Substantial amount of money.
You can probably get another 300 in elementary and the junior high schools. So, 600, I mean, 600 students, that's what, 3.8 million?
Roughly, yeah.
Yeah, about 3.8 million right there. And, I mean, all those, when you start talking in millions...
And then, you know, I'm also concerned, too, and I have the quote for curriculum expenses, and I wrote it down, that the budget was going to be $500,000 going into next year for curriculum. And I just, there were, there's where we should see an increase of an investment of quality curriculum and implementation, and 500,000 is not going to be where, I mean, it's going to be substantially more than that if we're going to implement quality curriculum and quality teacher training. So, it's just things that have stood out to me, concerns that I wanted to address. But also in my memo, I looked at just the overall operating function of the LA-DC, and it has been very disturbing. And I can have Steve chime in at any time, but there is no communication by the newly-appointed chair. We have not yet been together to conduct a CEO evaluation, and when we're asked about meetings and working sessions, I'm not being answered. We, we all agreed to meet, to do a working session, but yet the chair sets the agenda and sets the meeting dates. We are informed today that the CEO evaluation process was complete.
Could you give us?
And, and I don't, and I don't know how that's possible. So I've, I've, I've reached out to the chair, I've asked him how that's possible, because the commission as a whole has not met to complete the evaluation. So I was very disturbed with that response I received today.
So you still haven't gotten an answer to that question?
No, and we, we said, he, he said specifically that the CEO evaluation process is complete. And the, our fellow commissioners were talking about meeting to do a working session to start the process of the evaluation. So it's very disturbing and confusing, because we're not real sure where we're at.
We haven't sat around the table to have a conversation about an evaluation. I mean, you know, we went into executive session, and obviously that was a topic, but nothing was concluded, and, you know, we're kind of, hey, let's get together.
We all, we all agreed, you know, that we are gonna get together and have a working session, and now we've been informed today that the evaluation process is complete.
This is a question I was trying to, to find out more from you two, how this can occur, that you two are left out of the process and the others are included?
Well, the other two, and I don't wanna speak for them, but we are all, pretty much the majority of us, were in an agreement that we should have a working session. But, again, if you read House Bill 70, and you read that the act, the chair, the appointed chair sets the agendas and sets the meetings. So we are waiting for Mr. Sampson to give us those dates in which we can meet to do our work for the evaluation. When I, when you talk about being left out, if you're referring to the emails on March 12th and March 18th, those were emails that were sent by CEO Hardy telling the other commissioners, the state, the state superintendent-appointed commissioners, on what they could plan, or what they should plan on hearing or preparing for the next meeting. And it had a bullet to list, and I have the emails, and so they were prepping and planning the March ADC meeting, and completely left us out of the loop.
It's a three, I mean, it's a three-page email, and it has, you know, the opening has four subsets of what to expect.
It mentions Steve and I as-
Yeah, here's what I know is out there, and it goes to specific topics on the upcoming ADC meeting, which would take place on the 19th. So this was like the night before pre, the night before pre-game.
But you weren't going to that meeting?
Well, we were at the meeting, yes. Diane and I were both, that was a, a normal ADC meeting on the 19th, but we were not included in this email.
We were not included in this email correspondence with the other three commissioners about the pre-information meeting, about Mr. Hardy stating what he could, what we should expect to hear, and planning and prepping the other commissioners on, well, you might hear about this, and here's the reasons why, for the most part.
Here is what I know is out there, is kind of the way it-
So you don't have the information when you get to the meeting?
No, we didn't have that information, and that's another, that's another problem. I have requested multiple times for, typically when you do a board meeting, the board members or commission per se would be able to see the agenda at least a couple days before. I have requested multiple times to have the agenda before the meeting starts, and to have any documents presented at that meeting. So I can look at that, and I can mentally prep and prepare to write some questions down and, and be prepared for the meeting. My request, after probably three or four efforts, have, they just completely ignore my, my, my request to have information before the meeting begins. And when we sat down at the last meeting, I was very upset about the way that that agenda was set. I felt like it tried to deliberately exclude public opinion by, you know, keeping each topic, a discussion under each topic, limiting it to eight. I know it didn't work out the way that they wanted it to.
And we had no input in that.
But we had absolutely no input, and after several requests to have input, so.
And I, and I had sent an email earlier in the day and said, hey, I have things that I want to bring to the floor, but in, in our agenda that comes out, there's never a point that says, this is new business. Like, you guys, here, you have a new business piece, where the board can say, hey, I wanna talk about this. Well, Diane and I had things that we wanna talk about. So I had sent an email earlier in the day saying, can we put a, a new business piece? Well, when we got there, and then it got pushed to three and a half hours into the meeting at subset number 14. And I wasn't really happy about that, and I made that pretty clear publicly, that I wasn't happy, Diane wasn't happy about that. So the, the, the piece about collaborating with integrity, to use that phrase-
Yes, I heard.
-was not done, and has not been done, in just something as simple as a meeting agenda, and, and us being able to go in there. And, and the March 19th meeting, I kinda had to, to jump in and say, hey, I wanna say something here, before we went to, I think it was after the approval of the past meeting's agenda. So they're just, it's just not, very-
So you two, I hate to say that, are not effective on the board, because you don't get the information?
I think they're all, all of us-
I, I think that, I feel, and in my, in my memo, I expressed that I am not able to perform my duties as an appointed commissioner, because the, the commission is not functioning as it should be. And to me, I think that's a blatant violation. I think whoever, you know, if Mr. Sampson's the appointed chair, then he needs to do his due diligence about collecting input and, and supporting all of us as a whole commission, not just a couple people on the commission. And, you know, I took the oath, and I think, might I add, I was the first one to take the oath. But, you know, I think that the commission needs to be honored as a whole, it needs to work collaboratively, and we are nowhere near functioning as we should be as a whole body.
So-
Serving the public. And so that's my, my big concern.
So the CEO has already been evaluated?
Well, I have yet to see that evaluation, but we are informed today that the CEO evaluation process is complete, and that's all I know. And I just checked my email before I came into this meeting, and I've received no information.
And seemingly, I guess, if it's done accurately, the evaluation is complete. The process, however, won't be complete until the process that, at least you were told, or I think the four of you commissioners, determined that you were gonna have a work session to create that process.
And that's exactly what we are going to do.
And so, yeah, and I would, if I were advising, which I don't do much, your other two commissioners, I presume, are equally offended, equally disenfranchised. And so we, as a district, whether we like the commission or not, the commission belongs to us, and we challenged the commission process at the very beginning. Before we had issues with any product that it had delivered, we questioned the process. And, but what's interesting is commissioners whose process was maybe hijacked from them, as we stated, by a firm, didn't challenge on their own behalf. So, I mean, at least, and, and then let's face it, in all honesty, there are very few places that we've seen the demonstration where people can work together. On this issue, five commissioners, four which were excluded from the process, not to mention, three of them, with the exception of you, have been there from, in essence, the beginning of the CEO's tenure. And the person who's been here for three months, two or three visits, is the only person evaluating a CEO. So why would you have three commissioners? And I could see if they said, you know, Ms. Conabear, your input in this process will be a little bit minimal, because you don't have, but you've been there longer than the chair. And so here we have a chair who's evaluating an employee-
Periodal point.
-that they've never observed or seen, and there are three commissioners who've been part of this process for two years.
That's a very good point.
That, that doesn't seem to be reasonable by any extent, that yourself, Ms. Solis, and, and Ms. Patty would be excluded from there. I mean, I-
Because, you're right, they've been there from day one.
They've, they're the only ones who can, can testify, or to bear witness to whether this person performed to their expectations. And I think the evaluation, well, first of all, the evaluation should have been created before, right? You don't evaluate me on something that you haven't talked to me about. So how does the new chair create an evaluation, and you guys haven't even had meetings to discuss what the expectations that were placed on the CEO were? That's just, so as far as the process, there is no process. So he can say, I completed the evaluation of the CEO, but to put the word "process" in there indicates that there was some kind of collaboration, some kind of a process, some kind of a protocol, that you don't have it on, you don't even know what it was.
There was no process. We received emails here and there sporadically, but we could not make sense out of it, what it was talking about, what we were supposed to do, there, and that's when we said, okay, let's have a working session, let's sit down, but yet then I was informed today that it was complete.
Not even like a rubric that says, good, very good.
Right.
I mean, it was-
Is it number-based? Is it purely subjective-based?
I tried to give input on the rubric as well. And, you know, I just, I had been completely ignored through this process, through the new chair.
The other thing that I would suggest is, since evaluation's been completed, you should have it. If evaluation of your CEO, who you are charged with by House Bill 70, if you don't have the document, it's like, oh, I did it. Now, here's a copy of it. You don't, I mean, and, and that's a different kind of audacity.
Like I said, we were just informed this afternoon.
Is it a public record? Or is it, um, not?
We were just informed this afternoon that the evaluation process is complete.
Wow.
Now, was that after all five of you, did all five of you agree to a work session date?
Four of us did.
And he didn't wanna do a work?
Today, we all agreed.
Yeah, today, we all-
I'm talking about when you guys, at your last ADC meeting, when you guys went into your executive session and said, this is what we're going to do. Did everybody somewhat agree, and we'd, we'd pick a date?
We needed a date. That, that was the thing, is we asked for a date.
And everybody was in consideration of a date?
We, we had narrowed down, even on the emails today, that we said we would meet Thursday this week, Friday this week, or even Saturday of this week.
Okay.
Do you get a vote on this? Am I being silly?
Remember, we're not, we're not running the meetings.
I know, but, I mean, just 'cause somebody writes something, I mean, this, this is, this represents the whole, the whole commission, okay? I mean, it, it seems like it should be, you know, I mean, somebody can do a piece of paper, but you should be able to go over it, and, you know, and maybe change what you wanna change by vote.
Absolutely.
You know, but-
In the thought that-
There is no process. That's why I'm totally baffled.
So our chair, whoever it is, works on behalf of the board. It's the board's chair. It's not the district's chair, it's not the district president. That person, the, the position is to organize us, provide us with the information we want, what we want on our agenda. They simply are the, the expediter of our business. So President Ballard has no more authority than the board. In fact, the board only has authority as the board. None of us individually have authority. So the idea that, because it sounds like the commission is either working for ODE, or working for, but it doesn't sound like this chair is working for the commission. The chair is responsible to four people. That, that's why I was actually shocked. When the chair met with all of us and everybody else before we met with the four people, that's why usually what happens is, the body defines its chair. I mean, there's a reason why some of the stupid stuff that exists on boards is done. So the body selects, like Nancy Pelosi, they're, the, the body selects their leader, because the leader then becomes accountable to that body. So you guys have a scenario that is only chaotic. It is by definition dysfunctional, when the chair who represents your interest doesn't report to you, you didn't select them, so you can't deselect them. You know, that's like, um, the, the, the board of Clearview picking our chair. I don't know why the ODE would pick, I don't know why, except maybe to start the process. That's why I was even, I was confused when Ms. O'Brien, Norma Solis, was ever considered to be the chair.
I think it's in the law, or-
Well, no, the state superintendent appoints the chair, but why wouldn't they have been appointed the chair since they've been there day one?
But, but ODE didn't even consider people who had been a part of their commission that they thought highly enough to select, and they appointed them. They could have selected any of their appointments, but instead of selecting one of their appointments who had real knowledge of what had been going on here for a couple years, real context, right? Content and context. They select someone who doesn't, and then that person comes in and begins to do somebody's business. But I don't know if they're doing the commission's business. So I would suggest if there's ever a place-
They're not representing us, I can say that for sure.
Where your commission comes into agreement on four of you, that may be a great place to start a conversation, where you guys feel in agreement on.
So who will get a chance to see the evaluation that's already completed?
Well, hopefully we'll get, get that evaluation sooner, rather than later, so.
I'm still waiting to know who runs the Twitter account for the ADC, which I never got an answer to.
Never got an answer to that as well.
Which was silent.
That was, that was awkward.
It was, yeah.
There were a lot of things awkward that, at that meeting, unfortunately.
Yeah, this has created awkwardness. I mean, there's naturally awkward, and then there's unnecessarily awkward.
It's unnecessary, and we're not moving forward in this capacity when we can't function as a collaborative group. And I think that's what's very frustrating for myself, and I think Steve's feeling the same way.
Go back, 'cause you might be able to answer this, or I think we have to maybe, through the chair, bring in Josh. And looking at these expenses, back to, and I won't say the person's name, I'll just say the schools officer, and the moving expenses, and the lodging expenses.
Yes.
So I'm, it's clear that there's a contract. Tell me when I'm wrong. The contract states how much for moving allowance?
Correct. $10,000.
$10,000. And this amount totals what?
Uh, just under 16.
Okay, so we have a contract that says 10,000. We have reimbursement of 16,000. How does that happen? So I have a contract, which is the law, which is like the Ohio Revised Code, it's been modified. Is there an MOA, or any kind of memorandum, that modified this contract?
Not the contract specifically, no.
Okay, so can you explain to us how we get to, contract of 10,000? I'm assuming there are, though, I don't know, I think you said that you didn't really get the supporting documentation?
I did not. I, I requested, but there might not have been any.
So there is, there's reimbursement, so there has to be supporting documentation, correct?
There, there was supporting documentation.
There was two cashier checks that were written out to an LLC of some sort.
So, supporting documentation, from what I understand-
But it didn't say what it was for, other than a moving expense and a line item written out by somebody.
And so by our standards, that's not a supporting document. That document is to be accompanied with details, correct? If I gave you a, a, a document that was a receipt, it just had a total on it, that was not itemized.
It's not in here.
That, that does not pass the test, I would think, for a district of our size, with the, the volume of contract work that we do. I presume that, maybe I'm wrong, that the documentation that's submitted for reimbursement or for payment of contract is itemized.
There is, yes. Some of the, and some of the, some of the backup was itemized, there was cashier's checks in there, and they were submitted with an itemized list of what that was for. And that was, that was included in the backup. They, I mean, the other thing is, this happened in the audit, they pulled these. So they, they passed the audit.
Right, so, so, well, stop there, Josh, because we're gonna get it deeper than we wanna get.
I know.
For example, when something passes an audit-
Yes.
An audit is done without the presumption of anything being wrong. I'll guarantee you, in your line of work, a contract for $10,000, reimbursed for $16,000, when put under microscope, there's gonna be questions asked. So in that audit, I bet they didn't ask you any questions as to why I have a contract for $10,000, and I have reimbursed for 16. You know why? Because in an audit, a general audit, you wouldn't look that closely. They don't look at every single contract, line per line, in the, right?
They don't look at every single contract, but they're, but they-
But for you, wait, wait, 'cause I'm not finished.
Okay.
For you, when somebody submits to you, I would like to be reimbursed $16,000, and I have a contract. I presume you then look at the contract.
Well, not, not always, not, not, and not in every case.
Right. Would you, so-
So if there's an expense, if there's an expense submitted, ultimately, the, the major concern is authorization, and then making sure that I pay.
And I just fundamentally disagree. Ultimately, it is authorization, and it is supporting document to justify it.
Well, the supporting documentations have to be-
This is almost double the contract. So the authorization of an expense, it's almost double what was contracted, would cause me, or you, or anybody, to have some closer inspection.
So there was one expense, so the, the one reimbursement was the $10,000. There was an additional, which was close, the one that was close to $6,000. So there were two separate ones. I'm sure for, when, 'cause when it comes in, comes through, the ultimate thing we check for is to make sure it's signed off on. That gives us the authority. And then, once it's signed off on, then if there's something that directly references a contract, we will pull it. So what I'm assuming is that my, you know, my accounts payable person pulled the contract, saw that the one was within $10,000, and then the additional one came in for the additional six, and it was authorized. Ultimately, what we need is the signature, because he's the one that-
No, no, you said to us time and time again, that not only do you need signature-
Well, we need backup, and the backup was there.
Because, I'm just gonna say, because you would not sign anything that was questionable, illegal, unreasonable. A, an authorization to pay almost double what the contract was. If it were $100,000 we owed a company, and they sent us an invoice for $180,000, and it was signed by the superintendent as okay, that would not cause you, in and of itself, to honor that-
It wouldn't be the superintendent, it would be you guys.
Whoever was, if it were us, if we gave you a contract, if we, if there was a contract[1773.33] Whoever was, if it were us, if we gave you a contract, if we, if there was a contract submitted to this district that said that we owe this vendor by contract a hundred thousand dollars. They submitted invoice to this board for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars and we signed off on it and you then paid that check?
I would have to. You were giving me the authority to pay above and beyond the contracted amount.
But what you'd be obligated to do is say, board, this is, this is, this. I am not comfortable signing this double the amount because that's not what you authorized. If that's the case, then heck, we might as well do it five hundred thousand dollars. At what level?
But if you're approving it, you're giving me the authorization above and beyond. That's what I'm saying. If, if I come.
So you're telling me that the treasurer's responsibility is only to, based on approval from the board, to fulfill, okay, if that's, so then it's simple. What I was, what I'm going to recommend is that through our legal counsel, that we get an external audit on these pieces.
Okay.
And if that practice that you're talking about is reasonable, I don't think it's reasonable. Now, I don't think it's all your fault. I think that you're in a tough spot. You're in this spot where you've got stuff coming at you from both sides. We throw it at you, he throws it at you. You know, you're getting all this stuff and you're trying to figure out how to do your work with integrity. What I'm saying is this piece right here, and I, and I would say this from my personal knowledge, you're not, you're a person of high integrity. You, but, but this right here does not represent your work product of the past, nor this board's. You have not, I have never seen you go out of a contract and write a check. We've never presented to you this scenario. This is very, this is unique to me. Now, maybe it happens all the time.
It does, I mean, because you got to figure, so let's say.
Now, this, this is also a lot of, this is a personal reimbursement for moving expenses. And, and wait a minute, and I'm going to go further because we also have in the explanation, the expenditure for the lodging, which takes place before the contract. Where is it normal that I'm going to submit reimbursement for lodging that's previous to the contract? I don't know if that's normal. I'm just asking, is that, is that a typical?
It is for the transition because obviously you're going to be somewhere else before your contract starts here. So if, if you're covering relocation expenses, we're not paying it prior to her being an employee. We paid the check after she was the employee for costs that would are incurred for her relocating.
Okay, so this was in Washington DC?
Yep.
This is a condo that we paid three thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars for forty-four nights. Okay, I, again, since we don't get to see this information, explain that to me. Because I would guess that since you have this kind of odd kind of thing, that you probably be pretty familiar with this. So how did that work?
So what I, what I go off of is where it says relocation. I have never dealt with a relocation prior to this. I've never dealt with relocating expenses, never dealt with any of that. My understanding is the way the contract was, was phrased is that it was to cover all costs relocated up to ten thousand dollars. I then, if there was anything above and beyond, which it happens, I mean, there are contracts, so say, I brought a contract to you, say, prior, before state takeover. I brought a contract to you and as they're doing something, costs came in higher. I mean, probably the biggest thing I would say would be like the construction project. So I would obviously have to come back to you guys and have you sign off on it to amend that for me to pay the additional amount.
Exactly. You could not do that without amendment. And what we would have to give you is something, but why? Because the contract is the law. The contract is binding.
But his signature is what gives me the authorization to pay. So that's essentially a null.
So you're telling me that you can get a signature from him to pay something that's not under contract?
Gives us essentially changing the contract.
No, no, no. If, if there's no contract and he says, you know what, I want you to cut a check to XYZ for this amount of money, based on that, you're going to write the check? Because again, if that's how you're going to handle our public money, Josh, I mean, and it might be legal, but if that is the integrity in which you handle public money, now I have questions that I've never had before. What you just said to me.
But it's the difference between prior, when I would bring it in front of you, it would be an agenda item that you would approve. So all five of you would vote on the agenda, agenda item. That's what gives me the authority is that piece, that resolution.
And also.
He goes through and signs off on stuff now and that is his authority.
Right, the process of the resolution. So again, so if this is okay, then it's okay. But, so let's give, let's move past the ten thousand dollars.
But there's two different things here. And it's, it's similar to other discussions I've had. This isn't illegal. It is the fact that you guys don't agree with the expenses, but the contracts are wrote out for the expenses in this way. So, and that's the thing, like, I will happily take back questions you guys have in pertaining to the expenses and get you answers.
Okay, but I'm saying this.
But ultimately, what I need to pay it is the signature, like him authorizing it because that essentially is you guys voting.
When you say him, I'm assuming you're talking about.
The CEO.
Okay.
So, because the only thing I'm saying is, is if I have a contract that says ten thousand dollars.
Not to exceed.
Not to, not to exceed specifically, not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Correct.
And then someone tells me to write a check for twenty thousand dollars. You're going to write a check for twenty thousand dollars? Because that's what just happened.
It depends on who the person is. So it would be the same, but it would be the same scenario if they have the authority. It'd be the same scenario as me bringing it back to you and saying, do you guys give me the authority to pay this additional amount?
Okay, right. So what happens is you have a contract.
Essentially, my, my signature is essentially null and void in this framework. The only thing my signature does is tell my people that, hey, you can, you know, we have all the backup, we're good, pay this. But ultimately, his signature is an agenda item resolution.
Okay. And again, I guess, if you're comfortable working under that piece, I get it because.
Tim, I don't know that I have a choice. You know what I mean?
You know, I get that. But again, where you do have a choice is how do you protect yourself? How do you protect yourself, your integrity, and not just to the letter of the law, but to the spirit of the law? Because I'll tell you quite frankly, you're protecting maybe the letter of the law, but not the spirit of the law, right? Because this, I have a contract for ten thousand dollars. The person who is, who's authorized to change that amount tells me, write the check for sixteen. And I write the check for sixteen. If you are comfortable.
If I have documentation, which I do of him signing off on it.
I'm not talking about signing off on it. I'm talking about, again, this is, so again, so it's a difference in philosophy of accountability and whose money you're managing. That's what the difference is. I mean, I understand that there is a, there's a discrepancy in the letter of the law, right? Because you're not sure.
Well, I'm sure. I mean, it basically says that he has the authority. So it would be the same way that if I, if I made a recommendation to you guys previously with a resolution, I might not have agreed with the increase and I might have expressed that. Like, this is my recommendation for us not to pay this. But you guys all voted and said, pay it. Ultimately, I would have to go with what your resolution passage was. That's my authority to pay. I might not wholeheartedly agree with that we should pay that additional amount, but you guys passed that resolution, so I would have to pay it, which essentially is his signature.
Yes, but what happened is to protect integrity, on the record is your disagreement with us, on the record is you're challenging us to that level, to that expense, right? Because if you didn't challenge us, now you'd have been negligent.
Correct, correct. And it's not to say, it's not to say that behind closed doors I didn't challenge this, but ultimately he signed off on it and.
I presume, that's what I'm asking you is, the process, I'm presuming you challenged it.
Of course.
But you've never said that. You've never said that, right, well, in our conversation, this is not, what you had with him was not a privileged conversation.
Yep.
So I just asked you about this piece and where you never said is, yes, Tim, Mr. Williams, whatever you want to call me, I looked at that, I, I wrote the check, I had reservations about it. I questioned about it. You didn't, you haven't said any of that. So why? Because.
That's what I started saying when I said the ten thousand dollars, the initial piece of it, that tied directly to the contract.
What you clearly communicated to me is, is his option and I did it. That's what I got. Now, did anybody else get anything different? The gist of what you said, not the gist of what you said is, I think this is, this was questionable. Because if, when the audit or when the, when the, and it's a difference in an audit and forensic audit. They, it's a whole nother world, right? When they start looking for irregularities.
Well, they'll look for something specific. When you're in forensic audit, you're looking for exactly.
So when they look at this, this particular, these three, these two or three incidences here, I would think that they would have to say, this is a little bit different than what we normally experience. And that I have a contract for ten thousand dollars. I have a treasurer and if we replay the video or whatever, it'll say that you authorized this because he said so. It will not say that you questioned it. It will not say what you thought about the integrity of it. Because oftentimes, what we ask you about is, hey, what do you think about this? Why, you're the expert. Is this contract in line with other contracts? Are we getting ripped off here? So part of that is, right, so normally, for any reimbursement to come in at over two-thirds higher than.
And I apologize for not expressing that, but there was definitely a discussion because that's why his signature's on it. If it gets submitted and I am.
And frankly, that's how you need to make sure you protect your integrity. Because the letter of the law doesn't do that. Now, the other expense here is the.
I mean, it was two separate things. When I, when I got, when I heard about this, it was like, okay. And I went back to double check that we did everything on our end and we did.
This could have been, this could have been somebody else's piece put in. It wasn't categorized right. I mean, there are a lot of reasons that I would think that this might have been a misprint because we did reimburse for twelve people and it just so happens that these two got included here and it should have been separated. There are lots of things.
Yeah, and it was almost a year and a half ago. So of course, I went back and looked and said, you know, just did all my due diligence to look and say, did I have all the proper signatures? Did I have all the proper backup? And yeah, I mean. You can ask. I supplied it relatively quick. It was in a week. I mean, I would make sure I tried to turn around as fast as I could get it pulled.
Listen, we don't even know about this unless Ms. Conneber, I mean, this was water under the dam. We didn't, we wouldn't even know to ask the question. But these are reasonable questions that should be asked in terms of our accountability. Now, the next piece, again, the, the stay, so. Because I'm sure it was explained to you, because I would have a question too. We have a hotel in Washington DC. How did that, what was the explanation for?
I don't know it too in depth. My understanding is that her lease was ending and in order, knowing that she was taking the job, but it was timing of it, that she didn't re-up a new lease, that she opted to stay in that other and it was covered based on the relocation expenses. Because the lodging was covered within the contract.
While she was probably working for some other entity.
That, that I don't know.
When they, when they get into this stuff, it's going to get real messy, real deep, because there are so many red flag question marks that people would say this. If I ask twenty-five treasurers in public school districts about this, on the record, they might land in a different place.
Of course. I don't doubt that. I mean, there's.
But again, and in, in the world of reputations, which we're always trying to protect.
Of course.
This, this stuff gets so messy that it now compromises you at a place that is unreasonable. I mean, but again.
But I, I have to believe that every treasurer would answer in the sense of, all you're, all you're really doing is making recommendations. You bring it to it, but ultimately, prior, I made recommendations and brought it to you, as long as it's not illegal and it's, the authorization is there, I mean.
Well, there's, there's illegal, then there's best practice, right?
Of course.
Right, so, so we, so don't make it seem like we only play in this realm of black and white, legal and illegal.
Yeah.
The information we provide goes above and beyond so that there isn't the perception, right? So we don't deal with what is and isn't. We also deal with perception. So again, I'm just saying, this is our protocol. We've always expected, because we don't understand things, the treasurer in these areas provides us with insight, recommendations based on the best practices in the industry. And this seems to me not to be consistent with those practices. And if that is the case, then for the record, you need to state that this kind of accounting and reimbursement is not in line with the best practices of this industry because it isn't. I've been on the board maybe too long now. I've never seen anything presented this way.
But maybe not in relocation. But there has been, contracts come in, costs come in higher on every contract.
And there's a, and there is.
And that's the point to where that triggers the conversation. It has to.
What the treasurer doesn't say is, I think, well, maybe it was because of this. No, when those things come in, before you pay them, you get clarity.
And that's why I had the, the list. I, I didn't get more of a backstory, but I had the list of what the costs were and the costs correlated directly to what was written in the contract.
And I'm going to add, going back to the living expenses, we spent forty-two hundred dollars in December. On December tenth, we wrote a check for twenty-one hundred and then on the eighteenth, we wrote a check for twenty-one hundred of December of two thousand seventeen.
Those, those weren't our checks. So the cashier's checks were not our checks. Those were checks that she, meaning the chief of schools, paid to the company or to her lease to essentially, whatever, like the, I don't know what the costs were directly tied to in regards to it, but it had to do with the lease.
Is there backup documentation?
In Ohio.
I have the cashier's check.
In Ohio, though. She did that in Ohio, correct? At, in Avon.
No, no. I think the company is called Avon. I don't think it's actually in Avon. I think it's in DC, I believe.
So.
Twenty-one hundred Center Road, Avon LLC, but you think that's in.
It could have been a down payment. Yeah, that I didn't.
Yes, Center Ridge happens, yeah.
So we spent forty-two hundred dollars in December, on December tenth and December eighteenth.
Yeah, it's probably a first month run deposit, yeah.
But then we paid for a condo in March of two thousand and eighteen. So that's like a four-month swing on, that we're paying for two places, basically.
Well, I'm assuming that is for her permanent residence here and the amount of time she spent there in transition to coming here with, basically when her, her lease ended there, getting her lease in order to come here and then the in-between was the condo probably, is how it looks based on the backup documentation.
Okay, so what documentation did you receive? You said you received cashier's checks?
Yeah.
Is that, that is the documentation? That's it?
And a detailed list that ties back to the thing, that back to the cashier's check.
Something that will be beneficial for us before we, is that we receive, that you get to us, all of the information, the backup.
Sure.
Everything that you use to make your decision with, obviously, I guess. And again, I have questions that, at the next meeting, after seeing all this stuff, may request that we give direction to our legal counsel to have, not to go into deep audit or anything, but to look at this situation. Look at these pieces, which will take them not much time. When they start looking at certain things, it might cause them to want to look at more. But this seems to be, to me, as a board member, we would question this. If, and if, if the superintendent or you bought us this information to make these decisions, for us, that would be a challenge. And that's something I can go by. I'm not a CEO. So in our process, to ask for reimbursement when your contract states, what does it state specifically? Up to ten thousand dollars. What normally happens is before I spend six thousand dollars, more, I go back and say, hey, these expenses that we estimated, these estimates were way under. And this is going to cost us this amount of money. I would not spend six thousand dollars, sixty percent over what was allocated to me without going back and saying, hey, if it was two thousand over, a thousand over, that's one thing. But sixty percent? Is it reasonable for anybody to spend sixty percent over budget without authorization? No.
No, not without authorization, but there was, Tim, there was.
Prior, listen, prior, I'm just saying, it's not reasonable, Josh. It is not reasonable that someone would spend, who's never been here before.
Oh, I agree.
I'm on my first job here, and I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Ballard, but.
Yeah, I'm going to ask that you supply the documentation that's been requested.
Of course.
And we've moved this to our next meeting agenda to have this discussion.
I was going to say, I might recommend just by way of mediation temporarily is, if this is going to be an agenda item for next time. We've talked about a lot of different issues and checks and things. If you had, if her issues that she's raised or specific questions that you have or if you have different or additional or other types of questions, maybe it might be useful to him if you memorialize those in detail. Because that's a very general brunt of information we're talking about. And then you can narrow it down.
Yeah, I can send it to you soon. Like, I'll send it to you probably right after the meeting. I'll walk out and forward it on to you guys. Guys, take a look at it and at that point, yeah, send me your questions and we can have an open dialogue about it.
That would be a lot to consider if we're just generally asking about, you know, just random expenses or things. But if you have specific transactions you're interested in or if you have a question about, you know, the process and if something our department could help, you know, answer or if that's something Josh is more tuned to answer generally on how the process goes, maybe we can all come back and intelligently get some answers and specific questions. We can get specific answers and then we're all talking about the same thing at the same time.
We will certainly do that. We will memorialize that and get the information to have.
Thanks, Josh. I mean, again, it was direct, but again, these are just.
Oh, and I don't, I have no problem answering the direct questions. Trust me, these are all things that, I mean, like you said, you know me, you know how I function. When this was above and beyond, of course, I went down and said, because I wouldn't just arbitrarily pay above and beyond. I'd say, I'd say, you know, this, this is above and beyond. I made him aware of that, which is exactly what I'd do to you. And then at that point, yeah, I need your signature. If you are saying you want this paid, you have to sign it.
Yeah, and I'm, this is out of your character. This is not, this is not how you go business every night. You ask questions.
We've never, we've never, I've always asked questions. We've never dealt with this kind of expense. But yes, I have brought additional amounts above and beyond. I have always done that. Because I, I would be in violation if I didn't bring it to you to say, hey, this, the biggest, the biggest thing that pops in my mind is I know the construction costs came in higher on something. I would have to bring that to you guys in order for you guys to vote on it to agree. I think what maybe is kind of clouding this whole thing is process.
Well, that, that and the percentage of this. If we had a cost come in sixty percent above cost that wasn't pre-vetted.
No.
We'd be like, oh, this, yeah, go ahead.
Some of the expectation would be that if I've got a contract that's up to ten thousand, I would never even submit anything to you more than that. So that's part of the issue.
I would agree.
That we're dealing with. So we'll, we'll move.
And that's why I think there might be two issues here. I think.
There's a couple of issues.
Questions or miscommunication of what the process is and then questions and miscommunications about the results of those processes seem like two separate things to me.
Yes, and some of the reason we spend so much time in the exercises is because we are looking to a community to put a levy on, to put a levy on. And one of the things that have to be discussed in a levy situation is, are we being prudent with the dollars that we're already given?
Of course.
And when we, when we're not being, or there's questions about that, is when that needs to be vetted as you do with public dollars in an open forum, not behind, in, in, in a, yes. Non-transparent kind of a place.
And this is part of the pitfalls of House Bill seventy.
Yeah.
Because you give authority without the checks and balance piece in a different way than you used to.
Yeah, and, and the other pieces. And the other pieces, his responsibility towards the board was not removed by Hospital 70.
It's not, but the thing to consider also is previously, this wouldn't have been something necessarily that I would have brought to you. It would have probably been the superintendent and then I would have weighed in and said, oh, by the way, this is in excess of the contracted amount. You guys would have that information, you'd vote on it. So that would be my way of challenging it. At this point, yeah, the CEO is superintendent and board.
And then what we do though, is then we look at policy and we say, what is the protocol which would cause you to bring something before us?
Yeah.
Right? And then we'd say, wow, we just found out you spent double, yeah, there's a lot of.
I just wanted a quick analysis from Josh. How well are we doing with the levy?
In what regard?
How far have we moved? I know it's got to go to Elyria and he's got to approve.
It's with the auditor's office now. They would be, actually, I believe it was tomorrow. I don't know. Yeah, it should have been ready by now. They haven't contacted me yet. They said they, they would email me when it's ready for me to come pick up the certification.
Okay.
I've got one, one question on your key assumptions on the, it's the second item and it talks about the 3.1 million in the levy, but you go on to talk about the other, the other, the current expense levies. Are they coming due this year too?
Not this year. They're the, well, a half a year, so it's January 1st of 2022 is when those expire. So we would vote on them, the first time we could do it would be November of 2021 would be our first time to be able to vote on it.
Okay. When does the, the money for the building and everything, when does that go off? Isn't it in early 20, 22, 23 or something like that?
I'll get it to you.
I'm just wondering if it's going to be favorable. I mean, if it's, if it's like, if it's dropping down.
Well.
That looks, that looks good, you know?
We had the notes for that and I did do a rebuy on the notes back when, when, back before state takeover and I brought that to you guys. And I know that shaved off some time. So I, let me take a look at it and I'll be able to tell you guys.
I just, I just wondered when the bond issue, the bond issue part of it is going to be, and I probably have it at home somewhere. I kept all the papers that you gave us. I'm just thinking about all, the timing of all this going together, the bond issue dropping off.
Of course.
Those, those other levies going and on and.
Yeah.
Renewal.
Do we know how much money is left or can you find out how much is left in our LFI?
Oh, yeah.
Please find out to me. Just wondering, we're so far along with the completion. We had like millions at one time because of the interest that we had. And I think the last, there was like $400,000 or something.
Yeah, it was close to 10 million.
So I think as we, he's got that information. So I think as you were walking through the line of questioning when we talked about the reimbursement, we kind of took the ball from where we were. Did you all finish your, your report out of everything that you wanted to cover?
Sure.
Anything you need to add or we're all good? Okay.
Thank you, sir.
We're all clear?
Yes.
Okay. We got a second hearing from the public, please. Anything from the public?
Barbie Washington Riverside Drive. I first wanted to acknowledge Ms. Davis. She is, is she a dean or director?
Dean.
She's a 10th grade dean. She is running our summer school and they've done a great job. I think there was 180 some kids that have signed up. She said on the deed that there was a really bad storm, that 140 kids showed up even that day. I know that they have extended hours. Teachers have agreed to stay till 2:30 instead of noon. They extended two days. So they're really trying to support the kids to get them to meet their requirements. So I think that's pretty amazing.
That is very good.
Speaking of contracts, according to Mr. Hardy's contract, the, it says the commission shall complete the evaluation. I don't even know if Dr. Samson has seen the contract, but I mean, how can that be possible that he can evaluate on his own? Will some, can, I mean, who answers that question?
That's a very valid question.
And we understand that language too. We understand that, that's the way it's written.
Who would, who do we reach out to? Would that be Paulo, Clary?
Probably the state superintendent.
Okay. And then other contracts, if we've found that we're, we've paid above Dr. Brown's contract, are there others that we're paying over?
That is the very question that comes to mind. And now, as he says, he's now having to question things that he didn't even think he would have to question and that's something where we have to look into that audit that we're talking about doing.
The last thing I wanted to say is that.
There was no additional amount. I think the other relocation I supplied you with was, there was only two people that did relocation, which could be the only varying kind of part of a contract other than like standard payment amounts. And that wasn't, that didn't exceed her dollar amount for contract. There wasn't one additional one and that one did not.
Public records request, I'm still waiting for a couple. I know that some of it is complete and ready for me. The people that were responsible for gathering the information have said, you know, I, I received this email, I got your stuff, did you receive it? And I'm like, no, not yet. So who answers, like who do we reach out to to figure that out?
To the best of my knowledge, there's an email that they put onto their website that you're supposed to.
Yes.
And I think the CEO is, is actually delegating.
So what happens?
Was that submitted prior to that or after?
No.
Her permission?
Your permission.
There was some.
So, yeah, there was both.
So you said that you handle everything that you got already?
I have it all prepared, but yeah, it's, it's not with me now.
He won't give permission.
So even stuff that you received before you got the directive?
Hardy will not give permission.
I was to stop doing public records requests altogether. I was given, everything I was working on was to be given to him and then he was going to handle everything going forward.
Because I'm, I thought you had said that you, the ones that you had started on, you were going to finish up.
I got, I got some clarity on that. So I was still gathering, but.
Okay. So then you, that's different than what you said.
I was, at that meeting, I was still gathering, but then got clarity on the fact of at that point, turn it over.
Okay. So that's new to us, that change.
So the CEO is going to be the one?
I do not know who he's delegating to do that now.
So like, that's a concern. If, if, say I'm a parent, which I am, if I'm asking for public records, say for my child, I don't know who's handling those records. Who's going to see my child's information?
Well, we don't either. That's what we're saying.
So who, like, who do we ask? That's my question. Who, if, if it can't be handled here, it's not handled by our CEO, it's not handled by our ADC, like who is next in line? Because this can't just keep happening every meeting where like there's more concerns every meeting.